Drainage, anything new there? Zoning? Have met, okay. Am I missing any? That's, I think that's it. All right, let's move right along. Item number six, quarterly report presented by Main Street Executive Director Laura Holmer.
So, like a lot has happened since I was here last time, like it was maybe back in March. Can't exactly remember, but we had put a community act report together for you guys, which I kind of, I wanted it to be printed front and back, which I just didn't get. I didn't get that printed from the Ditchwitch print shop yet. But it kind of just puts together a community impact report from, from a little bit from since I've been here, but definitely since we started in Perry in 1995. So if you look at the numbers on the front, the investments, the new businesses, the facade improvements, the volunteer hours, those are from 1995, which is kind of a huge thing because next year we will have, we will celebrate our 30th year as Main Street program in Perry, which is a big thing. I don't know that there's a whole lot of them that are still around that started back in 95. I know Enid started in 94 and they're just celebrating their, their big, their big celebration year. So that's just kind of something that we put together every month. And a part of being a designated community within the Oklahoma Main Street, we are required to report these numbers monthly, and so that's how we are able to accumulate those. So they keep like a running total, and then every year they send us a load to our portal, like that year's impact report, and it'll show the numbers of businesses and things that happened within that past year, as well as like the impact from, since 1995. So a little bit of that is just kind of, we're going to suss out to our partners, our big partners from Main Street for the last year. And a little bit on the back, I know that you guys have, like there's an agreement that you support the Oklahoma Main Street, and so I felt like you guys maybe would want a little bit of extra information. On the back, it says Oklahoma Main Street, the leader in grassroots, and it's just a little bit of numbers and a little bit of data from like the impact that the Oklahoma Main Street has on the state of Oklahoma, and how many volunteer hours and businesses and all that good information. The one other thing that I wanted to throw in here was with our Placer AI program that we were able to get back in February, we were able to put all of our events, and I just put them all in separately and then added up the numbers, but we showed that we brought in more than around 9,700 in attendance to all of our events to the downtown through March to December. So that's kind of like just an exciting thing. So that's just something that I wanted to share with you guys on that side. And with our past events, I did go ahead and pull the numbers and kept track of them just because I thought it was just kind of neat. So as we go down, our events that we had, we partnered with the Lions Club for our Easter event, and we had over 800 attendants and attendees for that. We were also a stop on the 100 Mile Garage sale, and so we, that one was kind of hard to track because it was, it was just a variety of locations you couldn't just pinpoint. And within the program, you can only show like, it has to be like a certain point of interest. So I just went ahead and ran the downtown. I know a few people had different stuff set up downtown, and it showed between Friday and Saturday that we had 1,400 visits. Our Summer Fest event that we had just recently, it was around 1,500 attendees in the downtown. And then the events that we had last year are fixing to come up this year. Our Cruise in Oklahoma event, which will happen in August, it brings in 1,900 people. The Street Dance bring around 15. Our Meet a Maroon Night, which is probably our hottest event that we hold, brings in around 1,400. And then our Christmas Parade is just growing and growing. This year, we're going to have it on a Saturday night because we felt like the Thursday was too big, and it brought in over 2,000 attendees last year. So we're hoping that these events continue to grow and we're able to just bring in more people and put Perry on the map. I know last year at Christmas, somebody said, "We came here instead of Stillwater because Stillwater didn't do as much as you guys." And I'm like, "You left Stillwater to come, to come to our Christmas event." So that was pretty, pretty exciting. So with those events, we still have coming up this year, the Weekend of Local, which is the independent shopkeepers. They put it on, and it's just kind of, it's not a shop small Saturday. It's kind of similar, but they do it in the summer. So it's called the Weekend of Local, and I think Autumn got it put into the, this monthly newsletter that got sent out. But it's just kind of like how, just spending money in your downtown or locally. And so we will have our little lemonade stands like we did last year where they can set up around downtown. And then we, we kind of did it as like, how can we partner with businesses so they can set up in front, get, support the little kids, and also like shop and go into the businesses that are open? So we have that. We have our Meet a Maroon Night, which is we partner with the athletic director and the public schools and just kind of recognize all the maroons, all the sports teams that are coming up. And it's always a huge night. We moved it back a little bit. We felt like it was so, so, so hot, so we're going to start it at 7:30. And hopefully, maybe there'll be a little bit more shade covered because it just seemed way too hot last year. Our Cruise in Oklahoma event, which is my family's favorite and kind of just makes me nervous because of all the things that happened, but we are, we're still doing it. Everybody's excited about it. We'll still have a burnout contest. We actually got, we have booked a DJ to kind of pump up the burnouts and maybe make it a little bit safer. I feel like last year had people that kept getting close, and we had to use the sheriff's microphone, and we don't want to have to do that again. So we went ahead and got something for that. But that one brings a lot of people and the communities to really love that. We have two bands booked for our street dance, and it's the Friday before the celebration. We felt like last year, people went to the rodeo, or they went to the high school alumni banquet, and we had crowds that came in before, crowds that came in after. But I didn't feel like we got to stretch the whole evening like we had wanted. So this year, we'll have like a band from 7:00 to 9:00, and then there'll be a little bit of a break that will go from 9:00 to 11:00. So two bands and maybe catch all the people that want to come downtown. And events that we want, that are in the works, that are just, we're still in the planning phases. We will host our, years ago, Main Street used to have an annual local banquet, and we just, they haven't really done it. We kind of put it in with our Summer Fest event, but we're going to actually host like our own awards banquet, and we do have live entertainment for that. So we're thinking probably like a ticket to dinner and then maybe a celebration ticket or something for people that want to come listen to the concert afterwards. We'd also like to add in a Fall Fest event, similar to what we did this summer, whether that is the same day as we do the Halloween downtown, just keep people downtown longer, or maybe we do it a different day. We haven't, we haven't really gotten into all the works of that. But we have booked our Christmas parade in Snowtubing, and it is on a Saturday, so we moved that on. With our preservation and beautification projects, we still have facade grants available. We are able to do this for anybody that just needs, anything from a new sign to new windows to a whole new front facade. And so we were excited to still be able to get some of those. Our newest one, the American Legion sign, they put up a new sign last week, and they're very excited about it. And so if you guys are down that way, you'll have to take a look at it. So that's our newest, our newest one. We are, another part of our Oklahoma Main Street benefit that we are able to receive when we are able to stay in compliance with them is the architectural services that they're allowed, that they're able to give us, which is up to $2,000 worth of services. And that's just where they can come in and look over the front and, or maybe it's in the inside of it, but it's called a design assistant's request. And so they only allocate so much money per year for that. But that's something that we have taken full advantage of, and I feel like it's been very beneficial for our, for our program and our businesses that need a little bit of help on the front. Within our director, my director's position, the involvement that I've had in the past few months, we were able to recognize all of our youth on Main students at the awards banquet at the high school, and I felt like that was great. I think that we had a good group this last year that put in a lot of volunteer hours, and that was greatly appreciated. And I feel like with those volunteer hours, even though some of them are required to get them, I just like chose us to get them because we're able to kind of make an impact on our hometown. So maybe someday they'll, they'll want to come back to us. I do, another thing that I am required to do with Oklahoma Main Street is we have to get so many points every year in order to stay accredited. And I do get points for attending the monthly directors' meetings, which are all on Zoom, and they're very beneficial. They usually bring somebody in each time that's educational for us. With month? I am also attending the monthly Placer AI training. This was something that I kind of asked the lady that we were working with if we could set up because I feel like the program is just so big and so amazing and so impactful. So I have been doing that, and I'm just learning more and more about the Placer AI. And so this, what I learned this last time is that there's also an additional program that we can get to add on to it if we have a vacant building or a vacant space within Perry or in the downtown, that it can run a report on that building. We can search for something that maybe we want to add, maybe we want to add a restaurant. It'll, it will look at the square footage of that building. We'll filter out businesses across the nation that are willing to expand, and then it would allow us to be able to contact them. Right now, it gives us like, oh yeah, this chicken place might, would open up here, but there are no, like, you don't even have a way to get ahold of them. So if we were able to add this on, then we could actually like, okay, now we can reach out to these people and actually get a contact. So that's something that we're, we're working on. And within the last month, I was, we have a director's training. This last one was held in Enid, and we learned that as long as we are accredited through the National Main Street, we are now able to have access to a new thing that they put on their website called the Boom Drucker. And it is a, it's called the Building Opportunities on Main Street. It is actually pretty amazing how they already have our district like, like on their website, where we able to click on a building and go in and add information, how many square footed, footage it is. Is there a building inside? Is there a living space upstairs? So if we're able to do that for every building within our district, we'll able to run reports on like, how much housing do we have? How much do we potentially have? What is the exact square footage of empty space? And so it is definitely an amazing thing that they're able to give us, and it is free as long as we stay in compliance with the National Main Street program. So within those two programs, we do have to file agreements, and we have to stay affiliated, and we have to meet all the requirements, which we have, we have not had any problem doing. Our Main Street Day at the Capitol was successful. It was back a few months ago, and I felt like we had, we had good, good people that showed up for that. I did apply through the Oklahoma Main Street for a workshop that's called Tools for Your Business, and they have recently done this in a handful of Main Streets. And I just thought it was so awesome, and I was like, how do we do this? And they were, I think before they were maybe selecting communities, but now they opened it up where we can apply. So we applied, and what it will do is they will give us a certain amount of funding. And with that funding, we can take the, we can build it as like an evening event and get everybody within the community that would maybe have anything that would work with a business. So whether it would be the health department, or the city permits, or an insurance agent, or a bank, it could host like the Chamber and the Oklahoma Department of Commerce and the, I think that's like, there's a few other things that you may, maybe need like restaurant wise. But anyway, they were able to bring all those together so that like somebody who had a question or maybe wanted to start a business could come there, and it would be, come to that event, and they would have everybody they would need in the same space. So we don't know if we were able to get that or not. I just recently applied for it, so we're, we're hopeful. We, I applied for over 18 Oklahoma Main Street awards, which is a very, very, very competitive thing for Main Streets because we compete with districts that are triple our size. And so, you know, a lot more, a lot more things can be happening. But we were still excited that we were selected for six of them in the top three across the state of Oklahoma. So Ditchwitch is being recognized as a premier partner. Our Main Street Hero in the top three, Phil and Gayla Salvati. Best Facade Rehabilitation under 25,000, Dreamer Properties for the Marine Nutrition Building. And Best Facade Rehabilitation over 25,000, the Iron Horse Motel. And Outstanding Entrepreneurial Endeavor will be Willow, Willow Lane. And then we also will recognize our Board Member of the Year. And I think I need to add one more thing on this one that I wanted to add in. But maybe that's it. Maybe that's all. Do you have any questions? Any questions, comments? That's a lot.
Thank you, Laura.
I mean, it's quarterly, so I threw as much as I could into the past, past three months. But if you guys do have any questions or comments or anything, you're welcome to reach out to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
All right. Item number seven, City Manager Report and Updates.
So just a couple of things to update on. The first is streets. So last time we met in council meeting, you elected officials asked me to look at the Nazarene Church, that turn right there. I did look at that, sent our streets guys out. They did a little bit of patching in that area, but I think the main concern was the curb that's kind of sunken down, and they were going to look at that. I'm not sure if they have yet due to the emergency, which is kind of my second thing I want to talk about. But I have another updates with streets, which I've passed on to you elected officials, but maybe for the, the benefit of residents, I'll rehash it. Critter and Shane and I went up to Blackwell this past week and spent the day with the streets crew paving two blocks. And it was just really fascinating and exciting to see how they're doing their own streets of Blackwell, which saves them, I mean, they're doing, they're doing it for probably 20% of the cost that it would take to contract that up. So they're able to do a lot more with a lot less in terms of money and manpower, which is cool. We learned a lot from them, and I think my favorite part was Critter and Shane, towards the end of the day, were like, "We can do this. Nate, we can totally do this," which I think when we arrived, they, they were a little bit skeptical. So it was really fun to see that turnaround in attitude, just based on observing and asking questions and learning. So the next hurdle is to, to get equipment that we would need to do our own streets, and that's something I'm kind of working on. I've talked to a few of you council members about, is a large hurdle, but we are making good progress and moving in the right direction, I think, with streets, so.
So with that, we have some of the equipment to do it, but we don't have all the equipment?
Correct, yes. We have a zipper, we have a roller, we have two trucks that if they were in better condition would probably work to transport asphalt, but we will need additional trucks. We'll need the actual asphalt layer, a sheep's foot packer. And I think there's one other piece that I'm not calling right now, but I have this all written down. We've looked at costs for used equipment versus new equipment and come up with kind of a, a number that we think we'll need, and the next step is just figuring out where to get that money, so.
Good deal. I think you're following up on that because that was something that, I mean, a number of us went to Blackwell to go see everything that they've been doing, and it's good to see that it's something that our guys feel like they can do.
Yeah, yeah, I was really excited to see that turnaround in attitude. You know, they're super willing, but I think they just had some concerns about the expertise. But they saw Blackwell do it, they were able to ask the questions they needed, and felt like, oh yeah, we could, we could do this.
Good.
The next thing I wanted to update on was kind of the response to the emergency. First of all, I just want to echo what the council said, and thank you so much to the fantastic employees and residents. You were so supportive and worked so hard during the crisis. Like Mayor Wurlem said, to go from 0% power to 90% power in a day is, it's incredible with the, the crew we have. Obviously, there are things that we can improve on. I'm looking at some things with, with Brian Leatley, our electric superintendent, to kind of see the priority in which we turn back, turn power back on. A lot of times, those priorities in the past were based on things like our hospital and our water treatment plant, which, okay, yeah, those things need to be turned back on. But we've progressed to the point where those facilities now have generators. And so it kind of raises the question, well, do they need to be the top priorities if they have generators? So we're going to kind of go over that in the next couple of weeks and add that to our plan. I think finally, I would just maybe say, I've gotten a few critiques and a few just directions on, hey, we would love to see you guys do this better. Please keep those coming. I am the first to admit that obviously there's ways to improve. So reach out to me if you have those, if you have anything you want to pass on. My phone number's 801-808-3449. Text me, call me, I'm happy to chat. And I think those are the two big things that I have to update on.
Okay. Thank you, Nate. Anybody have questions for, for Nate?
I will say as city staff, we also, at our department head meeting, thanked Nate for all his work for the emergency because during the previous emergency, there was no leadership. And this time, it was very obvious for leadership, so we thanked him while working. Citizens of my heart, he did work to get the staff organized.
You can accept too, but some of the businesses pitched in helped out as well.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't highlight that enough. It was fantastic to see the businesses. Pizza Hut made a donation of 10 pizzas for our crews, and, which was so nice of them, but then we opened the lids and they have like all these nice notes written on the, on the inside. They're like, "You guys are awesome, keep up the great work," and I know I just really appreciated it. So just really the support, you know, for residents and the businesses was just, it was really great. It was great to have that. We appreciate everything that everyone did.
That's good to hear. That's good.
Quite verbal.
Thank you, Nate. All right. Item number eight, our CFO, Remarks and Monthly Invoice.
Yeah, so, mission accomplished. I think that's the standard phrase here. We got the line item mapping for the budget done. It's, it's just, Nate said that he met with department heads, they're having a coding lesson. So it's the start of a new era, we'll see how that goes. So, second thing that we've been working on, in fact, I've talked to Janet over the last two weeks about audit status, ensuring that we're getting that done. We are third on her list at this point, so she's wrapping up one, hopes to wrap up another one this week before 4th of July, and then it'll, yeah, she's already done the field work out here. So that should come pretty quickly as far as getting that audit issued, then we'll turn around and do it. So, it's all the time we've got. As far as invoice, invoice is just standard monthly accounting. Then our line item mapping, finalization of that project. And then the FY '24 amendments, which are on the agenda for a good one.
Any questions for Meredith?
I would maybe just add something. So yeah, great job on the, on the mapping. We're so thankful for what you guys did. My next step is to take what they did and make it maybe more accessible for you guys as council to be able to see, and for department directors to be able to see in a way that, you know, they can track those line items and say, oh yeah, we're, without having to pull a report, they can say, oh yeah, we're on track with budget, or we're over or under, and they can make course adjustments based on that. So that's the next big step, and it'll come, but it'll be, it'll be every few months, so.
Thanks, thanks. Maybe could that be made like accessible through the council login?
That'd be the hope, yeah. And we may, you know, we may even, we've kind of talked back and forth about putting something up on the website to allow access for the residents. We'll see all of that, but definitely we'll make it accessible to, to council and to staff.
All right, good deal. Thank you, Meredith. All right, item nine, Presentation of City Attorney Report and Monthly Invoice.
I sent that invoice to someone named Joe Biden. I sent that monthly invoice, I didn't see, I'm sorry, I, I didn't see the item attached. I hope it got emailed to all of you. I did hand out my city attorney report, and, and, you know, it's easy to read. But I, I just wanted to point out, you know, sometimes you miss the amount of work that's done in a month, you know? And, and if you look at this report, there were, there were two agreements from others that were reviewed and approved. One of those is the G, the GNP agreement to different NABO's. There were seven agendas this month that were assisted on in, in the preparation. And in addition to that, there were 25 different contracts, resolutions, documents that were prepared or amended in Hall or in Park, and of which I'm responsible for. So, you know, I mean, you know, accountants use numbers to trick people, but, you know, that's a whole lot of work in, in, in June. And I, I just wanted to point that, that out. June's normally a busy month because it's the end of, you know, fiscal year and the start of a new one. In addition, I'm, I'm assisting Nate in identifying some grant opportunities and, and also assisting, at least orally, with, with some recommendations and some attachments on those grants. You know, I, I will point out that when, when Nate was here, but not quite your manager, you know, Mr. Coe made a presentation about, about some of the needs of the water plant. And we can't discuss this, but, you know, I reported with respect to grants. I'm, I'm trying to get the communities that are interested in it pushing at least a shovel-ready project that we can make an application for in September, October, and, and get possibly up to another million dollar principal forgiveness. Everyone's going for principal, you know, another round of principal forgiveness grants. If you remember, we were the first community last year to get a million dollar principal forgiveness from the Oklahoma Water Resource Board. And of course, you know, if we can duplicate that again, that would be fantastic. To do that, you need something that's shovel-ready. We talked about that at the last, at the last, I mean, sometimes often if it's more than a million, you've got to actually be ready to, you know, borrow some. But, you know, there are some in my communities that are just going for the million dollars and throwing in some of their own money. So I, I would point that out. I think we all remember that talk and some of the needs that were discussed at that time. That and a few other, I always tried to, you know, push those grant opportunities because you can, you know, if you land one, you can more than pay for your salary for one year or 10 years with, with some of them. So that's what I did this month. Any questions?
Sounds like you're also trying to start a campaign.
I can outdrive you. You think you're handy, can?
I'm sure you can.
All right. Thank you, Bryce. Item number 10, Consider Amendment to Chapter 4 of the Perry Personnel Manual by the addition of a new Section 15 entitled Increasing Morale and Productivity Policy.
Yes, let me give a background on this one. There's been some things that employees have done in the three months that I've been here that have been outside the scope of their job. For example, the yard out that Autumn put together that brought a bunch of people to Perry, that wasn't even her job description. The plan isn't, you know, to give her a raise for that, but we'd love to recognize her and maybe provide some kind of gift card or something to say, hey, thank you so much for doing this. And increase morale in that way. And there's been several other instances of employees doing things like that that we want to recognize. Unfortunately, Oklahoma law prohibits the ability for me as a manager to recognize them with something like a gift card unless we pass this ordinance. So that's the purpose behind it. It's not to give, you know, crazy bonuses to employees, although I'm sure they would appreciate that greatly. But it's more just for like the small stuff, small gift cards and things like that to, to show appreciation for a job well done.
And the importance is, is that you recognize and you believe as a group that increasing morale and productivity is a public purpose. Because if you don't think it is, you shouldn't be in favor of this policy. And that in order to increase morale and productivity, that we're going to take some public money. I don't know what we're going to do, that's the next item. You know, add it to your budget. It can't be for anything that's occurred before. It needs to be prospectively. And, and it may be a gift card, or it may be, you know, a branded mug, or, or a nice, you know, a nice jacket or something with a, you know, Perry label on it, but, you know, my- Perry label on it. But, you know, my, my wife has been in MLMs and has been very successful in it. And, you know, she made some really good money, multi-level marketing. But, you know, what I learned from those is that this is the bigger thing. And the money's great, but the respect in the organization, the awards that she's received, the first president award from the company, I mean, it means more to her than anything. And, and being stood up in front of a group and really recognized, you know, those are the things that, that often keep employees with organizations. And, and this group has a whole team of them. I mean, you witnessed it, you know, last week and you witnessed it in the winter and in the hot of the summer and all. But, you know, I've set out in here really what that purpose is. You're not supposed to give gifts, but if you, if you deem this to be a public purpose and, and you dedicate a budget for it and, and you, and, and it's for things that are done in the future, then it's my opinion that is for a public purpose. And it's not giving a gift. It's actually fulfilling a public purpose with respect to these, with these employees. So I believe that it's perfectly legal and actually something that you should do.
I'd like to approve this ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on it?
I just think it's something that we had discussed also in some of our strategic planning to give, to have some sort of opportunity to, to do things like this in the future. So it gets right in line.
So with this, so we would have to amend our budget to get this fit in?
Yeah, that's actually the next item.
Right.
To give them any authority to spend, we would have to.
Right.
And so I actually, Derek, I see what you were talking about earlier. I, and I missed this. I would maybe recommend doing ten and then letting me look at some budget, talk budget with Meredith and Russ and come back with something for eleven is maybe what I would recommend you do.
Yeah. Okay. Well, do you have a motion and second for that? So let's have roll call.
Let's have.
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Gold Iron?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Or them.
Yes. Okay. Then with item eleven, we'll take no action on that. Do you want to table it to next time or?
Next.
Second.
Yeah, so we, so we'll table it to next week. You can take your pick on second. And then roll call. When you're ready, Christine.
Hand, oh, Letso.
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Gold Iron?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Or them.
Yes. Okay. Item twelve, consider approval of budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budgets.
So you have in your packet amendments for last fiscal year. So just a little bit of cleanup based upon what has already actually happened and you all have approved. So the reason that we're doing these at this point is to keep us in compliance with the Oklahoma Municipal Budget Act. We do have some spending that was in excess of what we originally approved. If we don't amend, then we will have a compliance issue. So these are all things you all have approved, but starting just on page two, the general fund itself, interest income came in significantly more than what we had originally budgeted based upon their interest rates. So a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase in the general government based specifically on interest income. General government, an increase of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is related to hospital work, the co-aligned consultant, Van Meadows property, one ten east Maple property. Those are the main things that are contributing to that three hundred and fifty thousand. Street department, thirteen thousand dollars due to crusher rock and rebuilding of the hydro cylinder. Parks and Recreation had some overtime and mower repairs. Over on page three, court based upon just the operations, the amount of people that went through, operations went up a little bit. Page four, police department increased due to the roof, uniforms and a Durango, outfitting the Durango. E nine-one-one went up based upon the mapping services. Fire department, engine six, roof, engine six and training, the increase of forty-five thousand dollars. And then the ambulance had ambulance repairs, which were about thirty thousand dollars. So again, all these are items that you all have previously approved. You've seen, it's just shoring up our budget to make sure that then we don't have a compliance issue. That's the general fund. Cemetery, I'm going to flip through real quick. On page six, additional seasonal worker and, or workers time is how that should be said, and stump grinding are the two things that contributed there for twenty-three thousand dollar increase. And then over in municipal authority, the one point one million, the OWRB grant that came in under administration, previous administrations payout, severance related on that, the electric department, hundred and twenty thousand related to a backup transformer and signal light repairs. Sewer department, we moved a hundred thousand dollars from the water department over to the sewer department just based upon where the time was used allocated. So you'll see the increase of a hundred thousand in sewer department and a decrease of a hundred thousand in personal services for the water department. They also had some water plant improvements and main replacements in the water departments, which is what was created at that. And then over in the energy office, Dingo Properties is what I wrote down there.
What was that?
Dingo Properties. I may need to look that one up. But in total, these are all things that you have, again, previously seen and Dingo Properties of Perry.
Those were the ones.
No. That was what was under code. Yep. Our energy office is what's under actually. I can get you more information on that.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have Cassell up to our, I don't have Cassell on my laptop, so I can't check the invoice, but we'll find it.
Yeah, exactly. So those are the amendments that need to be made in order to keep us in compliance for the twenty-four budget.
Dingo is ground zero. Do you know what ground zero is?
Yes.
Do you guys know what that is?
Yeah, Mr. Richard Crowes.
Oh, it's Crowes, yeah.
Over, yeah, one of them.
So we paid.
One over by the water plant.
Thanks, Autumn.
Way to go, Autumn. Thanks.
All right. Any questions on that? It might be a transformer.
Transformer.
It's probably a transformer.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They paid us for it because we gave it to them. So how?
And we pay.
Yeah.
And then they reimburse.
It kind of depends on what alleged with the.
All the room. With that one.
Yes.
That one though.
Yes. Motion, motion to approve the budget amendments for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second. Good motion and second. Roll call when you're ready, Christine.
Let's have.
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Gold Iron?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Or them.
Yes. All right, item thirteen, discussion and action on items pertaining to the Perry Hospital renovation project. Sorry, thirteen A, consider approval of amendments to the construction management agreement dated April fifth, twenty twenty-three with NABL Construction Corporation and the amount of the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of Perry Hospital renovation project. Now with this, we do have one thing that we need to add that on this management agreement or on the GMP, we need to add the PFA holdings as an owner on the agreement.
Is there any questions?
Yeah.
I'll try to make the same motion I made earlier. Motion to, motion to approve the amendment to the construction management agreement contingent upon PFA holdings being added as an owner. All right?
Great.
Second.
All right. Roll call with that.
Let's have.
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Gold Iron?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Or them.
Yes. All right. So just to clarify on what that was. So everything that we're running for the hospital renovation, we've created that PFA holdings entity to handle the hospital. And the GMP did not have the PFA holdings listed as an owner in that. So that was something that we need updated on that.
That's seven years.
Yeah.
All right.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right. So we have thirteen B, considered, consider declaring surplus, certain list of equipment and other materials as surplus property and authorize sale to Brandon Brewer in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars if approved by the city. Now, the PFA holdings meeting that we had, we decided to recommend that we consider declaring a surplus, but not authorizing the sale just yet because we do have some other bids that are coming in. But we felt appropriate to go ahead and surplus the list of equipment that was given.
So are we just authorizing it to be declared surplus, but not so much a sale to a specific person?
Yes, yes. So we're declaring the, the list of equipment surplus, but we're not selling it just yet.
Okay. Motion to approve declaring surplus, the list of equipment and materials.
Second. Roll call when you're ready.
Let's have.
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Gold Iron?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams? Or them.
Yes. Unless Joe, you want to say it twice?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
All right. So we got thirteen C, presentation of SMCA CEO operations for past month, the hospital renovation project status report. And like I said in previous meetings, so we don't really have too much of an update because today's the first, so they don't have the month end completed yet.
Yes, not final closed yet.
Right. But with that, do you have anything to present to us or any questions for Courtney?
Any questions? If you have questions? How's it going?
It's going great. We're hoping late August, early September, construction can actually start on the renovation project. They again, didn't want to start demolishing things until they had some materials on site. So that lagged time in getting some materials here before they actually started.
So August.
And you hit on one of the biggest negatives is basically that bad debt.
Yes, yes. One of the, the biggest things we're seeing this year compared to last year is an increase in what, what I call uncompensated care. So it includes bad debt and what we, charity care that we provide to the community is, is on pace to be about a million dollars more than it was in previous years.
So bad debt means, means those that come into the hospital and can or don't pay their medical bills. That has to go to credit collections.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Courtney.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. And so at thirteen D, so consider payment of architects additional services in the amount of thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars pursuant to article four point two of the professional services agreement dated April tenth, twenty twenty-three with Health Facilities Group LLC. With this one, the PFA holdings decided to table that because we're still in contact with Health Facilities Group, discussing what those additional services are in that thirty-seven thousand. So they still working with them and talking to them about that. So as right now, we don't have anything to, to update.
Correct, yeah. Those are a really nice way of saying it, Mayor. I just didn't follow up this last week, so.
It was a busy week.
It was a busy week.
It was a busy week.
Yeah. But I will be following up this week and just, they sent me an email that lists the items. So Bryce and I just want to talk through it with them, make sure that those aren't, you know, the charges aren't steeper than Meredith.
Yeah. So this one, we don't need any action. That will be brought back again by PFA once that's been done. All right. So item fourteen, consider approval of certain city contracts. So let's start with fourteen A, consider approval of tourism development contract with Perry Chamber of Commerce.
What was that, what was their total last year? Does that say?
No, decreased. So, yeah, let me give kind of an update on this. For this whole contract section, I met with, I think, almost every one of the people or entities that we have a contract with this previous week. We talked through, you know, what we're paying them and why. The chamber was a really interesting discussion. They talked to me how, about how they are largely funded through the business fees. I think the, the word they used was self-sufficient. They're basically self-sufficient based on those user fees, business fees. And so looking at that, we kind of said, well, what, what do you guys need in order to do the two events that we care about most as a city, which is the, the event in September and then the Spring Fest?
Spring Fest and sixteen celebration, yeah. And you have Katie Carers here as well. Right behind you.
Oh.
Went to Chamber.
So I met with Katie and I met with, so sorry I didn't see.
Sorry, Smiley.
And I met with Kaylee. And so it was, yeah, it was a really good discussion. We talked through those things and asked them, okay, well, what do you guys need in order to do those events? And we kind of looked at the cost breakdown and ultimately said, well, probably five thousand would, would suffice. They were going to go back and talk to their treasurer and just make sure that they would still be able to provide those, those events based on that amount, which I don't know. Katie, if you have anything to add, have you guys been able to talk to them yet?
Uh, we haven't had extensive conversations yet. We actually have a board or executive committee meeting this week. So we're going to address that a little bit further in detail. The only hesitation that we have is this seventy-five percent cut to the funding that we have been receiving from the city. And we realize that a lot of chambers don't have the luxury of getting city funding, so we are one hundred percent grateful for every dollar that we do get. And we also recognize the state of the economy right now. And so anytime we go to local businesses and ask for funds, we want to be really sensitive to the strain that that puts on local businesses. So we still want to be able to do events like the sixteen celebration and, and do it as big and as extravagant as we have been in the past. You know, what a draw that is to get people into the community and how much everyone here loves it. And then also Spring Fest has become kind of a fixture in the community as well. So, and we're, we're okay with the five thousand in funding as of right now. And it's kind of a let's see how it goes thing for us, just because there are, we know kind of typically what our budget looks like from year to year. And so we're going to do the best that we can to, to do all that we can with that five thousand. And we do receive a lot of our funding for events through sponsorships and through our annual dues from businesses in the community. And so as long as people are still able to pay those dues and, and join the chamber and support what we're doing here, we should be able to continue what we're doing. So.
Thanks, Kate. Yeah, so my recommendation was to move forward with that five thousand based on what she described, which is similar to the conversation we had with her and Kaylee.
All right. Have any questions for, for Katie or Nate?
Is there a, I'm sorry, anything in here about them presenting to the city, like what for, just in a.
Oh, for the quarterly reports. We talked about getting that added.
Awesome.
It was added as a public present.
Quarterly report shall be publicly presented at the second regular city council meeting in the month in which the quarter occurs.
Okay.
And they did ask in that meeting if that's something that, you know, the council would want. And I said, yeah, I think they're interested.
Okay. So just to clarify, would that be quarterly? A quarterly report that would be given?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And maybe report given, I think presented is maybe more accurate.
Perfect.
Right, right. Right, right. Any other questions?
Motion to approve the, uh, contract with Perry Chamber of Commerce. Second.
Okay, motion and second, so have roll call.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Item fourteen B, consider approval of a service contract with Main Street of Perry.
So this one, I can give some background to, um, meeting with Main Street, they, unlike the chamber, they don't have those annual dues that they're getting. Um, and they're largely funded through us and through Alzón Grant and stuff. Um, so my recommendation was to keep it the same as last year, which was that twenty-three thousand.
I make motion to approve the Main Street contract.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? Let's have roll call.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes. Okay, item fourteen C, consider approval of a contract for services with Perry Senior Citizens Corporation.
Yeah, so this one, um, I've heard only good things about our senior citizen, uh, center. We pay, I believe we pay the salary, um, and then we pay the utilities for that building. What is the utilities? It doesn't say salary or...
Do we pay the salary for the director?
Yes, we do. Um, yeah, like I said, I've heard only good things, uh, I feel like they're, they're doing a great job out there. Um, I know our seniors utilize that. So I, I made the recommendation to continue as is based on last year.
Okay.
Motion to approve the contract with the senior citizens.
Okay, motion and second, roll call.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes. Alright, item fourteen D, consider approval of agreement with Northern Oklahoma Development Authority, DBA Cherokee Strip Transit.
Uh, this one I met with Jonathan, the director for, uh, NODA, um, and I also went and visited, uh, Cherokee Strip Transit. Um, I was so impressed with everything they're doing over there, I just, the building was clean, um, the, uh, the staff was busy, they talked about how many meals they're getting out, they said they're giving me exact numbers for Perry specifically, so we could see that, and we'll see that in our future meeting. Um, but just so impressed with everything they're doing, and I think the value is not only for the seniors who are receiving the services, but also for the seniors who are providing the services. Um, it gives them something to do, it's, they told me that almost exclusively all of them are retired and either looking for just additional income or just the opportunity to interact and have that social estimate. So I know that, uh, NODA did recommend an increase this year from their current amount, which is four fifty a month, to a thousand. Um, and I told Jonathan, hey, listen, we didn't budget for that, um, so I'm recommending that we do the, the four fifty and then look at it next year for that thousand. So this is identical to last year.
I make motion to approve the agreement with NODA for the Cherokee Strip Transit.
Second.
Okay. Let's have roll call when you're ready.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes. Alright, fourteen E, consider approval of contract for services and lease agreement with Wheat Heart Nutrition Project.
So although, uh, Wheat Heart Nutrition is a separate contract, um, they're really, they work hand in hand with the Cherokee Transit, um, in getting, um, meals out to seniors. So it's, they, they get meals out to seniors in the community, they also, um, provide a place for seniors to come and, uh, eat meals at that Wheat Heart building that we provide for them. Um, so it, really, I would say that that, the Cherokee Strip Transit and then the, uh, Senior Citizen Center really work all in tandem to provide a great, uh, a great quality of life for seniors, and they do an awesome job. So a recommendation was just that we continue doing what we've been doing with them.
Motion approved.
Second.
Alright, motion and a couple seconds. Roll call.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes.
Before we move on, I would just like to say thank you on all the services and contracts that we have here and what they do for our community.
Yep.
And they're working at the Journal with all these entities all through the years, they have had such great service to Perry, and I was in a group last night where a couple senior citizens, since we're talking about, uh, those entities, and now, you know, they love getting out and going and getting with people, and it is, I just think those are treasures for Perry.
Agree.
We really appreciate them too, they go daily to serve meals, and if somebody doesn't answer the door, they alert us and we're there, and, and a lot of times they've gone to the hospital, we do research, but I appreciate them going and checking every day, because if something's not right, they call us, that's a big plus on our end.
That's great, Nate, thank you for meeting with everyone individually on that.
Absolutely.
That definitely helps with those partnerships and that relationship with each of those entities. Alright.
We, we don't have a, a, an item there, but we do have some funding that I'd like for us to bring that back eventually to talk about the dollars and maybe what the council wants to, to deal with the dollars and...
For what?
The contracts that, that we, there's like fifteen thousand dollars that we budgeted for.
Yeah, so shaped with the chamber and then also David Payne's contract.
For example, I, I personally, I'd just like to be thinking about this, bring it back for an agenda item is, is what that money I see it kind of as an economic development, and maybe we keep it in that realm for economic development intended or whatever else you guys think.
Right. Because with the, you know, with the chamber, for example, those funds were coming from the hotel rental taxes, so those do have to be used a specific way. So, yeah, to a point.
If we want to talk about it.
Mm-hmm.
Or do that.
Yeah, future one. Alright, item fifteen, consider approval of law enforcement assistance agreement with the sheriff in Noble County. This is another yearly one that we do, Sheriff's Department.
Yes, it didn't use to be annual, uh, but the sheriff wanted it annual, which is just fine. And this allows us to, our police officers to act with jurisdiction outside the corporate limits of the city, but on real property owned by the city or real property owned by another in the instance of, uh, of, uh, ditch which plant three, uh, where we provide, you know, security services through our police department. So it's very important to have the agreement in place.
Motion approved.
Second. Alright, motion and second, let's have roll call.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes. Alright, item sixteen, consider approval of appointments by Mayor Lawrence Worthen to the Historical Preservation Commission of our downtown district. Um, I've had a number of folks come up to me in different nominations and, uh, the appointments that I would like to recommend to the council. Um, ours follows, so for, for our first member that shall be a registered architect, engineer, building contractor, or licensed tradesman, um, I'd like to recommend that we have Larry Belk, who's an architect, fill that role, I've spoken to him and he's agreed to it. Um, one member shall be an owner of any building located within a designated district, whether resident of Perry, city of Perry or not. I recommend that we have Phil Salvati fill that role. And one member shall be a member of the board of directors or an employee of Perry Main Street, I've asked Laura if she would fill that role and she's agreed to that. One member shall be a licensed real estate broker, agent, or auctioneer, and we've asked Stacy Wilson, pissed up in this app. And then one member shall be a member of the planning commission or a member of the city council, and I've asked Derek if he would fill that role. And so those are my five recommendations. With that, any discussion?
Good choices. Make a motion to approve the appointments mentioned by Mayor Lawrence Worthen for the Historical Preservation Commission.
Okay. Uh, roll call.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
As you can't get out.
Worthen.
Yes.
You've been very body of yourself.
Perfect.
I don't know about that last one.
First of things.
She's got a building downtown and you, you just, they're one man's lot.
Alright, thank you to those who agreed to fill those positions and look forward to seeing what we can do with our downtown and preserving our historical district.
Do we need to vote on a position for how many years they're on? Like, is, don't, gonna be a, a one-year person and fill it through...
I don't know.
Does that have to be selected now?
Well, Derek is going to be in, uh, for so long as he's, uh...
For three years?
Planning commission or member of city council, so, yeah.
Should the, do you have the commission to get together and talk, yeah, have the commission get together and kind of discuss that?
Yeah, we can have that and have that, and have that come back.
We did allow for, uh, them to, uh, has to have council approval, but for bylaws to be...
For bylaws, and that can be part of it. And I do want to point out that, you know, at this point, we will move forward with district designation, which is going to require a notice. I mean, now that they're appointed, we're going to call a meeting, probably a, a, just an introductory meeting, talk about those bylaws and then talk about how they would like to begin discussions of creating that district. So, I'll probably get that, that group together fairly quickly.
Okay.
In fact, if we could do it next Tuesday, that would be...
I do.
You know, that would be good, maybe a noon meeting or something.
Alright.
Is that something you could attend? Yeah.
As far as I know, it's...
Maybe you can reach out to others and find out about next Tuesday. Um, but that'll come back to us, I guess, and we'll find out who's serving what terms. Alright, item seventeen, any new business? Um, no, we can also go back to item four. Sir, did you have something to bring before the council today?
Mike?
No.
Oh, okay, good, just hanging out with us, alright.
You doing alright?
Yeah, I'm fine, thank you.
Alright, item eighteen, consider convening into executive session to discuss negotiations with the Perry Professional Firefighters Local forty-two, forty-two International Association of Firefighters, bargaining agents pursuant to Title twenty-five, Section three oh seven, one eight point two of Oklahoma statutes as amended.
We can table this one if you guys would like, we, uh, we're hoping to have a signature and they've said verbally that that's probably going to be the case, but, uh, the person we needed the signature from is on his honeymoon, so we didn't want to...
Motion to table.
Oh, that's Dylan, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, no, I gotta get it tabled. Just send that through in our... Alright, we have a motion to the table.
Second.
We have a second. Roll call.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes. Alright, item twenty-one, adjourned.
Second.
Nobody wants to leave. Roll call.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Worthen.
Yes. Alright, let's call our meeting to order for the Perry Municipal Authority, July first, twenty-twenty-four, and have roll call.
Copy. Bloodso.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis. Cold Iron.
Here.
Rob. Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Here, alright, we've got form. Item one, consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call when you're ready.
Bloodso.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Yes, there you go.
Yes.
For more...
No, I can't tell me yes.
Okay, Williams.
Yes.
Brown. Worthen.
Yes.
Good.
Alright. We're here and ready, alright. Item four, consider amendment to chapter four of the Perry Personnel Manual by the addition of a new section fifteen entitled Increasing Morale and Productivity Policy.
So we approve.
Second.
The third.
Roll call, if you're ready.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes.
Brown. Got it ordered.
Alright, item five, consider approval of budget amendments to fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budgets.
Whatever.
So we...
I'll do a second.
There we go. Okay, Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Item six, new business?
Nope.
Item adjourned?
Second.
And Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Alright, call our meeting to order for the Perry Facilities Authority, July first, twenty-twenty-four, and have roll call.
Copy. Bloodso.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis. Cold Iron.
Here.
Rob. Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Here, alright, item one, consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes, item four, new business? Nope, item five, adjourned?
Second.
It was on us now. Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.